On the microphone first thing. New microphones, so this is a test. Thank you for being here this evening. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency on Tuesday, November 12th, 2019. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that we go to a roll call. Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gilman?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
And if everybody could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, rise if you're able. Now move on to item four, Approval of Minutes and Notice of Waiving of Reading of All Resolutions and Ordances Introduced and/or Adopted Under This Agenda. I'd ask for a vote first on this special meeting from August 16th, 2019. Move to approve.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay. A four oh vote for that. And then I would ask for a motion on the regular meeting minutes from October 22nd, 2019.
And I'd be happy to second that.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'll abstain from that.
Okay, so we have a three zero one. Thank you. And we'll move on to announcements. Is my microphone cutting in and out? Are you guys okay? Okay. I will get very close to the mic and use my theater voice. Moving on to item five, Announcements. Meeting Orientation for New Attendees/Viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as "action items," where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizens' business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments, as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements, as the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. I'm gonna try avoiding saying anything with the letter P tonight. Okay. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open-for-Business Program. This, I just made the comment about saying Ps and others like alliteration using Ps. Fantastic. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Runert Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit sonoma library.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and by appointment. For more information, call (707) 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com, or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888-777. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. And additionally, we have a flyer up here for the Holiday Food Drive. Thank you. This is sponsored by the City of Kattati and also the California Homework Makers Association. It is going to be on Saturday, December 21st, anytime between 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM, and it will be behind Kattati City Hall, right here. It's a nice event. They organize donating foods to, food to families in need so that they can also enjoy the holidays. Now we'll move on to item six, which is our honorary mayor. She is here this evening. Her name is Ava Franzini. Please come up, Ava. And if you could just introduce yourself and tell us where you go to school, what grade you are, any activities or anything you're involved in.
Hi, my name is Ava Franzini. I'm in eighth grade at Lawrence Jones Middle School. I am the youngest of four kids, and I've lived in Kattati for my whole life. I'm in the ATS program through Sonoma State, that'll get me ready for college. And I've recently gotten two piglets that I like to hang out with after school and play with. And that's about it.
Okay, great. So thank you for that. I know it's a little nerve-wracking, being in front of all these people at a microphone, but you're doing just fine. So what I'll do is I'll go down the line and just see if anybody has any follow-up questions for you, okay?
Okay.
So Councilmember Moore?
Welcome, Ava. Thank you for just getting in there. So you're already in an AP program for Sonoma State?
ATS.
ATS, which is?
Academic Talent Search.
Okay. Which is, is it similar to an advanced placement process?
No, it's like a readiness program for college. Like it'll help me go through all the SATs and stuff in high school. It'll get me ready for college.
I thought of a college program. Great. And is there any particular interest you have in that, or any of those classes that appeal to you?
Not really.
Not yet?
No.
And you have piglets?
What?
You have piglets, you said?
Yes.
And how old are they?
Like two to three months.
And how big will they get?
Not that big, like a small dog.
Are they like pot-billy piglets?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And I'm assuming they're okay within our city ordinance? Well, good luck with that, Ava. Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey?
Oh, hi, Ava. Oops, is this thing working? You have to get really close. Well gee, you've grown up. I have the honor of having Ava be my neighbor, but she's gotten to be quite the young lady at this point. And I'm so happy that you are our honorary mayor this month, and I know that the mayor or vice mayor will be giving you some homework. You know, it'll probably take you all night, but you know, I'm sure you'll, sure you'll get to it. What are the names of your piglets, since you have two?
Pancetta and Priscuto.
Very nice, very nice. Well, are they indoor pigs or outdoor pigs?
Outdoor.
Outdoor pigs, okay. Well, I'll have to come by and see them. I'm sure you've seen the pigs across the, across the way here. They get a lot of attention. So I'm glad to hear that you are working towards college, and I think that in eighth grade, I think it's okay to not know what you want to be, but I'm glad to see that you're preparing, and I'm sure that you will do very well. And I'm happy that you are our honorary mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Landman?
Thank you, Mayor of Mayor. Well, hello, Ava. I guess the first thing I have to say, so the pigs are named Pancetta and Priscuta?
Yes.
I imagine they don't come often when you call them by name?
No.
No, that's okay. That's pretty cool. All right. I hear what you're saying. I remember being in my teenage years, and the hardest thing is decide when people say, you have to go to college and you have to figure out what you want to do with the rest of your life. That is a difficult decision, and I kind of think that as long as you at least you know you're going somewhere, which you do, you usually wind up in a good place, so I think that takes care of itself. But what I wanted to ask, since you're not sure what you really want to do in college or years later, what are a couple of the things that you like doing now, besides the piglets?
Well, I was thinking of being a veterinarian, because I wanted to volunteer at the animal shelter, but I haven't yet. I don't know why, but I was interested in that.
Well, this, having the piglets and perhaps even coming over to visit the demonstration farm right across the street will give you a chance to spend a little time with some animals, and who knows, maybe that's something you'll be interested in. So I'm just gonna join my colleagues in thanking you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
So I'll just echo as well, thank you for being here and being part of this honorary mayor program. I know it's a little nerve-wracking. But so I at least had given you a prelude. What we would hope you could do is talk to your classmates or other kids around your age and just ask them, what are some things that they feel are missing from the City of Kattati? What could we do differently to involve them, or in some of the activities and things around town? And then just give us a quick, couple sentences report when you come back in two weeks.
Okay.
Does that sound doable for homework?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. And like I said before, oh, and did you have anybody with you tonight that you would like to introduce?
I have my mom, my aunt, and her friend Kelly.
All right. Well, good evening. All right. So like I said before too, you're free to go if you would like. You're welcome to stick around, but I know you probably have things to do, so we'll see you in two weeks, if not before.
Okay.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.[714.11][714.11](APPLAUSE).
Okay, so we'll move on to item seven, Approval of Final Agenda Act. Is there, are there any changes that we need to make to the agenda?
Thank you, no proposed changes.
Okay, perfect. So we will move on to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item that is not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any item, any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend, or the acting mayor this evening, may extend that time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. And I've gotten two speaker cards. Mr. Barich? Do you want to come up? Can you move this closer to me?
Good evening. Mayor, did I submit a speaker card there?
Yes.
Would you mind reading what I printed on there as my name?
George Barich.
No, I think that's incorrect.
Well, since you're not a judge, or retired judge, or a retired City Council member, I won't refer to you as honorable, but I will call you Mr. George Barich.
Okay, well, according to proper etiquette, which you should have known about by now, proper etiquette calls for former City Council members to be referred to as the honorable council member, and so forth. Since I simply asked in the past that I be referred to as former City Councilman or Councilman, proper etiquette is to refer to me as the honorable. Now you can research that for yourself. We've only had a few months to research that, folks. Maybe you can go back and do a little homework on this, and we can get this right. Good evening, and I'd like to bring up, at the last City Council meeting, there was item 8C in the consent items.
And this is from last?
From the last meeting, and since the council had the last word on that mocking my analysis of this item, I want to come back and make a couple corrections, if I may.
It is within our subject matter jurisdiction?
You're interrupting, Mayor. Okay, please, I'm able to speak on anything in the world tonight. I want to speak on this matter, okay? Thank you.
I was.
Please allow me a little more time for interrupting me.
Of course.
So on this item, the point I was trying to make, and the question I had regarding this item, is what are we spending $71,000 on? Because these are the two pages in the staff report. I read them pretty clearly. It was a huge agenda last meeting, but I happened to read this. Let's go to the background of the, of the item, and it says, "The city wants to spend $71,000 for the purchase of, an upfitting of a police vehicle." A, police vehicle. Not a patrol vehicle and community service vehicle, but a patrol vehicle. In the last paragraph, it states, "The police vehicle, singular, will be purchased under the state's vehicle bid." So it appears that the staff report was written a little confusing. So as a taxpayer, I got up and asked a simple question. What are we spending $71,000 on? A gas, gasoline burning vehicle, an electric vehicle, a hybrid vehicle? Could someone please explain? In two weeks, none of the City Council members have had the decency to get in touch with me and let me know what we spent 21, $71,000 on. Staff has not contacted me and informed me. It would have been very easy for the City Council to ask City staff, would you please get back to Mr. Barich and give him a few more details on the purchase agreement for the vehicle, but nobody can do that. And so I think you owe me an apology. I read it clearly. I read it as it was written, and it is very confusing, and it would so be so kind as to get back to me on my question, because I am a taxpayer, I'm helping to pay for all this and pay for those police cars.
Okay, and we're about 30 seconds.
I know, but you also interrupted me for about 30 seconds.
That's why I gave you 30 seconds.
Okay, so thank you very much, Mayor.
You're very welcome.
And I'm looking forward to getting your assistance with this matter, and it's my accountability. Thank you.
Absolutely. Does anybody else have any public comments? Okay. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I have one more speaker card. Jennifer Barrett. Thank you.
I actually just wanted to come and introduce myself. I'm new to the City of Kattati. I moved here at the beginning of September. Really wanted to let you know that I don't have a fake profile. I am really invested in working with the city in a positive way. My introduction to the city has been pretty negative with a certain Facebook page, and I really want to get involved as much as I can. And I can, I'm really, really sorry that you guys have to deal with behavior like that, instead of somebody who wanted to do some different things and help the city instead of being argumentative. Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody else who has public comments? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment period. Did anybody have any comments on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I will close, oh, I'm sorry, I will leave comment open. I understand that there was one item, item B, I believe, on the consent calendar, so we'll open it up to the council.
Yes, before we take action on the consent calendar, I wanted to make a comment on item B. Unfortunately, because of an issue with a family emergency, I couldn't be here the last time, so I could not make my comments publicly at that point. But my concern with this project has to do with the elevator. There is one elevator currently in the plans. I know that it was mentioned in the Planning Commission, but I happen to have a relative in an assisted living facility, and I will tell you from being there almost daily, that having that many units on the second floor and one elevator will not work very well at all. The facility my relative is in has many multiple elevators, and what happens is, is they are all using either walkers or scooters, and therefore it limits the number of people that can go in and out of the elevator. Just yesterday, I was there again, and a person pulled in with a scooter, and therefore only one other person could get in the elevator, and people had to wait. So my concern with this is the ability of people to be able to get up and down, especially since the cafeteria and the other items for people are on the first floor, and that is limiting to anybody living on the second floor.
Okay, thank you for that. And to clarify too, tonight, we're just voting on the zoning ordinance, so there will be more time as well for public input on the design as well. I think at the next, is it design review? Or the next meeting, I'm sorry.
The, the next step will be design review. That'll be a staff-driven process, and then the improvement plans will come back for approval once they're finalized.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
So I would like staff to please take that into consideration.
Thank you. So we'll come back to the consent calendar and see if we have a motion on item.
I'd like to move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that's a four zero vote for approval. Now move on to item 10, Direction on Future Agenda Items. Did anybody have anything they wanted to add this evening? Okay, perfect. So we'll move on to public hearings. Item 11A, Kattati Station Apartment Project, Second One-Year Time Extension. And I believe we're going to Mr. Housh.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, councilmembers in public. The item before the council this evening is a one-year, a second one-year time extension for the Kattati Station 74-unit apartment project, or mixed-use project. The council will recall, on October 25th, 2016, this project was granted all discretionary approvals required to construct 74 units and approximately 5,500 square feet of commercial space, a city park, and an additional parking lot next to the Smart Station on Santerana Way. The building, or I'm sorry, the developer submitted building permits to construct this project, but it was found to be financially infeasible for him. Throughout the process, he received a single one-year extension approximately a year ago, and has subsequently filed for a secondary extension to keep these entitlements valid through October of 2020. With the last meeting, the council granted Bridge Housing, an allocation from the loan from the Affordable Housing Fund, to help them construct the project as a 100% affordable mixed-income project. And so staff does anticipate building permits being issued in construction to start next construction season. However, that deal is yet to be finalized. This extension is the only item before the council this evening, and it'll allow those negotiations to proceed and for the deal to be finalized, if they can reach agreement. These entitlements will expire in October of 2020 if building permits have not been pulled, and there is no ability to further extend these entitlements. With that, staff is recommending approval, as no onsite conditions have changed, and the project is found in conformance with the general plan and all development criteria of the city. Available for any questions, should you have any?
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for staff at this point? No questions? Okay, so we can open this up to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to comment on the Kattati Station Apartment Project Second One-Year Time Extension? Yes, sir? Did you want to come up? It's next to the Smart Station? Next to the Smart Train Station? Oh, sure. Well, that was easy. The one I could actually answer. Okay. So with that, I will close public comment. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Sky, I'd like to just quickly just put it into the record. I personally think that this project should be redesigned, being that it is being sold to a different party, and I know it's been approved as a certain project, but now that it's being sold to a different developer, I think that it should really be being redesigned appropriately for that development company. So I just wanted to express that I don't think that this should be extended.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else for public comment? Yes, Mr. Barich.
Councilmember Barich. I understand this is the second and last reading on this item, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I was really hoping to see more citizens come forward during the discussion of the item regarding the design, and how this project is moving along. Unfortunately, tonight, I know, being the last reading, we're at the 11th hour here, but at the last meeting where we discussed this issue at length, I did personally request information on whether or not the carports were going to be designed with photophotaic panels on top to help with the energy system out there and our carbon footprint. I know Councilmember Moore has stated some interest in this issue. I didn't, I've never gotten an answer to that question. We've had two weeks. Staff has not gotten back to me regarding my question. Council has not gotten back to me. I'd like some information about this current design, whether any accommodations are going to be made on top of the carports, or on top of the parking garage, garage or parking area, or photophotaic energy gathering. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'd like to ask Sky a question, if I may. So if conceptually the project is in essence the same as it was previously, and now it's just potentially being driven by another developer, but, but for all intents and purposes pretty much the same, why would you want to see it redesigned?
I don't think it's a good design in the first place. I think it's a poor design for that street. I think it needs far too many units. It was originally, part of the original plan was much more mixed-use, and there are a lot more residential units in that development than are originally proposed, and the developer has come to you guys on multiple occasions to change that and get a certain number of low-income housing units, to add more units for residential as opposed to commercial spaces. There's a huge, terrible parking problem on that street. It's even worse now with the Sonoma County Transit Agency parking lots and Smart Station and all the other Smart Stations charging for parking, and that one not charging for parking. All of the original townhomes and condos on Santerana Way were designed to be family housing, but are really student housing. A huge majority of them are rental units now, investment properties, and that wasn't part of the initial design. The city originally made this street have to be smaller to slow traffic. It really needs speed humps, because we've got students speeding down that street all the time. They're four-bedroom units mostly, that have four to eight people living in them, which means four to eight cars per unit. Everybody's supposed to use the garage for parking, but we know how America works, we all store stuff. The reality is that that isn't happening, and even so, you've got two cars in a garage, you still have two to six more for one unit parking on that street. So I don't recall off the top of my head how many units this new development is proposed for, but it's far too many, and I know that the developer has proposed and has worked with the city to have more parking than is required of the city, but it's still not realistic for this community, or the reality of the American family that has, you know, adult children that live at home. And so, you know, if you've got a couple, there's two cars, and if you've got a teenager into their twenties with another car, and then if you've got a three, there's many three-bedroom units in there, so then, you know, the daughter has a boyfriend, and he stays there half the time too, so there's. the time too, so there's another car. So, the, the development is not well-designed for the city of Catati, the town of Catati, and for the reality of that street. And I do understand that part of the development does, uh, call for the re-widening of the street, uh, but then, it's, it's still not, it's not offering, uh, a good enough answer to the problems that already got designed incorrectly from the initial development in the early 2000s. And so, I think that it's just a mistake to have gone with a, and, uh, a straight apartment complex next to the station and next to these already, uh, you know, attached family dwellings, um, that have turned into an off-campus housing development.
Thank you. I just, um, I just kind of wanted to get your input on that, if there was anything that we hadn't considered in, in the process. Um, so thank you very much for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. And then, I'll add one last thing, I know time is precious, but I think that the design of the buildings doesn't fit what's already are also been designed for that street. It's got much more, um, flat roof, uh, design, and it's much more commercial-looking as opposed to the townhome buildings that look more like resident structures. Um, so it just doesn't, it doesn't fit. It's a, it's a poor design, and I know that you guys have worked really hard to work with the developers over many, many years, and, um, you've all, you've, you've come to medium ground, but it's, it's, now it's, now it's moving to a different development company, and it should be, it should be, it should start over.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Any more questions? All right, I'll bring it back to council.
Yes.
Sorry, go ahead. Councilmember Harvey.
Um, Noah, could you, um, explain basically the, the overall general process? Cause I think that that's a little bit, um, misleading based upon the question that was, um, asked. My understanding is this is a project that's been entitled, they're allowed, you know, so many extensions, we've gone through everything there, um, and what happens when, um, a project that's already entitled is sold? Because that's, my understanding is that's a pretty common process. Um, that happened with the, um, units on Alprezo, it happened with the units down on East Catati. So if you could explain what our capabilities are and aren't, um, with that, I think it would be helpful.
Yes, uh, absolutely. Uh, it is very common for, uh, certain types of developers, uh, they sometimes are called paper developers, whereby they'll get a project entitled, uh, sell it to another, uh, entity who will construct the project. Um, it's very common for certain folks who are in construction to buy developed or, uh, entitled projects in order to move it forward to construction. Um, so, uh, the ability of, or the, the ability of the city to, uh, make changes to an approved project just because the ownership changes is, is non-existent. So, so the ownership is, has no bearing on, uh, the process required of the city to move a project through the process or to act on a request for an extension. Um, the code does give the city some provisions when an extension is being requested, if there are changes in the environmental conditions or site conditions that result in changes needing to be made for the project to better fit or address those situations. Staff did not find that that was the case here. The developer who was originally, um, granted the entitlements has been pursuing construction and development. Uh, it's staff's understanding that construction cost has really, uh, been the number-one, uh, factor that's influenced this developer's decision to sell. Um, and as the speaker noted, it, it is worth noting that this project will widen the street, provide more on-street parking, um, and provide a separate parking, uh, facility and a city park completely, uh, separated from, um, the parking that's required to serve this site. Uh, the building will have to be constructed to Cal Green Tier One standards, so that's a level above the standard building department or building code requirements. Uh, and the carports are able to be modified to add photovoltaics, uh, should that be one of the paths chosen by the, the construction process to meet the Cal Green standards. Um, there was actually some concern, we had a neighborhood meeting, uh, fairly recently before bringing this extension request, uh, and a number of residents showed up, and there was a fair amount of concern over the commercial, uh, component of the project. There was some hesitancy as to what types of commercial uses would occupy that and how that would further exacerbate the parking concerns that were voiced by the applicant. So that was actually, um, brought up by some concerned residents who were, who were very concerned and not wanting the commercial element and, and were looking to the city to ensure that the appropriate type of use would occupy that commercial space.
Thank you for that. I mean, I thought we were very limited, and, and I think, as you called them, paper developers, um, oftentimes, there, as was pointed out, it takes many years to get through all of these processes and make all of that happen, and there are certain people that that's kind of what they do, and then other people are really builders and get things, um, built. And I think that it, it, that's kind of where we're at, um, in this juncture. I understand the concerns of parking. I think we have hit on parking at least every single meeting that we've had, um, on this. I, I agree with the comments that say that we, you know, done the best we could. We added additional parking over in the area, um, by the Smart Station, and they're paying for that, and we changed all the parking, um, within there, and, other than not building, I mean, I think that there's really nothing, um, that we could do to, um, to better that, and we don't have a whole lot of control over privately-owned property. Um, and so, um, anyways, that's what I think about that.
One, one thing that's worth noting I forgot to mention is the, the developer that's interested in purchasing the property has committed to a parking management plan, and they have the ability to limit occupants to no students or, um, unless they're a family member of, of one of their residents, they will prevent, uh, multiple students from doubling up in rooms to try to address that. They did mention that in the, at the neighborhood meeting and at the last meeting.
And I believe that they also stated that they, um, uh, was mentioned, you know, having boyfriends staying and all that kinds of things. They are very strict, um, with their resident, um, policies also, at least from, um, when we spoke with them on our, um, at our special meeting.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Lamond.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm not surprised to see parking come up again either. That was, and has been during this whole process, the biggest issue. And understandably so, because that was a legacy problem that's deeply impacted this neighborhood, and that's why, understandably, a lot of focus was put into resolving that. Now, of course, I'm only going from memory, but I do remember when we had public meetings discussing this issue, the respondents who were here representing the neighborhood were largely satisfied, and it also met the requests of, I believe, the letter or two we had, or actually exceeded them in terms of it. And this, I think this was perhaps the most, for many people, even more so than questions of design or this or that, was more of a selling point, was the fact that, yes, a park is nice, a wider street is nice, but the significant improvement in parkings are the only chance to actually turn parking around for this neighborhood to where it should be, uh, as befitting the nice neighborhood we have there. So, uh, I get that as far as commercial, yeah, I'm not surprised. Some people understandably, for good reason, will want more. Some for good reason will want less, uh, that's as it always is. The reality is, right now, it is hard to build commercial space. I think we're good to have a little in there, since there was supposed to be some, but it just really can't be more than that right now. But more to the point than all of those good points, I think tonight, we're just being asked to determine, as the review authority, whether the applicant has made a good faith effort to exercise this permit. And I think it's fairly obvious to us what's happened with construction costs, and more than cost, just even the availability, even if you have the funds to pay. Construction right now, uh, is very hard to schedule and get done, uh, and this is what happens when you burn hundreds and hundreds of homes on a regular basis. So with that, I'm comfortable to move this, if there's no further discussion tonight. I think with that, the, it meets the standards as we have before here, they've made a good faith effort, and I'm not seeing anything as described in here that gives me a reason to not give this last extension. So I'd like to move a resolution granting a one additional last 12-month time extension to the Catati Station Apartment Project, inclusive of all previously adopted conditions of approval, resulting in a new expiration date of October 23, 2020.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Please show that that's a four oh vote in support. Thank you. Now move on to, I swear, it's coming in and out. Okay. We'll move on to item 11B, emergency organization ordinance, and, uh, to this, I believe we're turning to our city manager, Damian Abid.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. So, um, this is a pretty, I think, straightforward, um, amendment to existing code. And, um, the item before you would introduce some changes to our, um, code under chapter 2.24, and this is the, this is really kind of the third step in a longer process. So the first step was the update to the procurement policy, which incorporated, um, emergency procurement as part of that, and then the emergency operations plan, which came to you, um, a month or so ago. And then this is the last step, just to clean up kind of and make consistent all the different, um, documents with each other. And, um, the main changes that you see in Red Line Strikeout and the ordinance are, um, updating the definition of an emergency and then tying it, um, to the statute, so therefore, the, the pre-existing one was just a standalone definition, but it didn't change as the actual state statutes change over time. So this, um, updates it to the latest state statute, but also ties it to the state statute. So as a state amends the definition of an emergency, this will just float with it. And then, um, it also, like I mentioned earlier, will clarify and coordinate, um, the, the other actions, um, when local emergencies are declared. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for staff? No? We've seen it a few times. Okay. So I'll open it up to public comment. If you'd like to comment on this ordinance. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council. Want a motion? Yes, that'd be great.
All right. I would like to introduce an ordinance amending chapter 2.24 of the Catati Municipal Code Regarding Emergency Organization and Functions.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, please show that's a four zero vote in favor. And we will move on to item 11C, introduction of an ordinance amending section 1.08.010 of the Catati Municipal Code.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll be taking that, I'll be lauren tonight.
Okay.
This item. So, uh, again, another fairly simple ordinance update. Uh, we have a responsibility, as all governments do, to, um, provide public postings for, um, certain public hearings, and, um, in our code, we have three different locations specified. We have the, um, City Hall, which is right outside the doors here. We have the Catati Vets Building, and then also the US Post Office down at the, um, Oliver Shopping Center. So, um, that's, of course, in addition to the website posting, because we have a website. Recently, the, um, the US Post Office, the Catati Post Office, expanded the number of PO boxes that they have at that location, and so, um, it pushed the public posting area, um, into nonexistence essentially. So, um, uh, we talked to them, and there just is no other space available within that building for public notices. So that, um, that is what is necessitating the discussion tonight, and the proposal that, that third location moved from the US Post Office to the Smart Station. There is a posting box that was built with that building, on, on the exterior of the building, and it would be, uh, it was in the long-term plans to maybe eventually post there anyway, and this is, I guess, a good nudge to move a posting out there, for that's, that side of the community. And then that would replace the post office as the third location. Happy to answer any questions?
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff at this point? Yes, Councilmember Harvey.
Um, I, I've been to many cities and many post offices, and it seems to me that it's common practice for, um, uh, public offices to do postings in there. So I'm assuming that they are under no obligation to do that? Is that a correct assumption?
That, um, it is correct that they're under no obligation. There's, um, postal service guidelines that say, "We encourage you to cooperate with local governments," but there's no obligation.
Encourage to? That's the extent of it? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, cause the post office is an ideal location. It's a location that everybody frequents, so it makes sense, and, you know, many people just like myself would assume that that's where, if you go to a city, that that's where you will find them. So it's very interesting that it won't be so here because of their limitations. But thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, open up to public comment. I swear I'm getting closer, I'm getting further. Okay. Yes, go ahead.
I'm curious to know where at the Smart Station it would, the postings would be, and then further, I'm curious what the purpose of that building is, what, and, and how that building works. I understand it's a City of Catati building, but it's at the Sonoma County Transportation Agency lot. Uh, so a side note for the community is our HOA would love to use that building to meet, but we haven't gotten any comment on being able to do that. So where, where and how can that building be posted?
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, Mr. Barich.
I'd like to ask a question. I think it's been many months since I've gotten an answer to any of my questions, but I'll keep trying. The Catati Train Station, I don't get down that area very much with my work so much out of town. The Catati Station is closed, is it not? Okay, it's, it's currently open?
You can catch a train there if that's where--
No, I meant inside the, inside the, uh, the train station itself. Is it open for business inside?
No.
No. Well, uh, I would suggest that maybe, uh, that's not the best location, since it's not really functioning inside, that the post office is going to get a lot more foot traffic than the train station. So please keep that in mind.
All right, any further public comment on the posting of the ordinance of the-- Okay. With that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Will there any comments or questions?
Um, would it be possible, um, uh, for the city manager to discuss, um, with Sky, the use of the building? And my understanding was the placement of this was going to be on the outside of the building, so there's no, uh, reason for anyone to go inside to see these postings. Is that, my understanding is correct?
That's correct. I mean, the short, the short answer is that the posting box, um, exists today. It's, um, mounted on the structure on the East Catati Avenue side of the building, on that entrance side. So if you go there today, you'd see that posting box. Um, with regard to the building itself, it's currently under a lease with Smart, and, um, Smart was intending to, uh, use it as a information center, although they have yet to utilize it that way. But I'd be happy to have further discussions with the HOA and opportunities.
Thank you, I'd appreciate that. Okay, any, yes, Councilmember Lamond.
Yeah, I was just gonna, uh, agree with Councilmember Harvey. I wonder if this is Smart has leased this, I believe, has gone through negotiations to do that. Can anybody hear me? It's hard for me to tell--
Only with your kiss in the microphone.
Okay, if I start to, if I start to fade, start shaking your head, no. So, so with that, um, but I do think it'd be worth talking to Smart, because they're not going to be using that. I'm guessing some of the meetings might be evenings, and even if they're during the day, there might be the ability to do that. That'd be a good thing for Smart to do, to, to show some respect for the community and help out. We could at least put the ask, or better yet, just introduce the two responsible parties, whoever is the key person for the association, whoever to talk to at Smart-- whoever is the key person for the association, whoever to talk to at Smart, we'll introduce them and recommend something good and see if we can get it to happen. And I just wanted to mention, you know, this is kind of good news in a way for the post office. It means that Catati is kind of doing pretty well. They need the space for more post office boxes. It's not...they're out of wall space, so there's nowhere for us to put this thing. As was stated, we can't compel them. So I will miss the post office too, frankly. I always got a kick out of seeing our minutes right up next to Public Enemy Number One from the FBI. I don't know if there's anything good or bad about that, but it was kind of a neat community thing. But things change, and so we'll just figure out a way to make it work. So with that, I would be very happy to introduce an ordinance amending Section 1.08.010 of the Catati Municipal Code, updating the locations for posting public notices.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Please show that's a four-zero vote in favor. We'll move on to item 12 on the regular agenda, which is approval of the Parks Capital Plan. And I believe there's a PowerPoint, so we might need a moment to set up. She's going to be presenting this tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you. I will introduce the item.
Okay, go ahead.
She kicked me under the table and I recalled that I told her I'd do that. So apologies, Ashley. So thank you. This is the Parks Capital Plan. Has it previously gone to the Planning Commission for a general plan conformity finding? And the senior staff reports some of the comments that came from the Planning Commission. Free to consider as you're looking at this tonight. And aside from Ashley, who will tell you all the details about kind of where we're going with this, I also wanted to also point out that we have a representative from Integra here tonight, Rick, who's sat there. And on the more technical type of questions, he may be a good resource, if you have any. So with that, I'd be happy to hand it off to Ashley.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council. Sorry if you can't hear me. I'll get really close. So the...this is similar to what we showed at the Planning Commission, but the Parks Capital Plan is the vehicle to conduct and implement a community process to determine what amenities and improvements are desired by the community for our park system, develop planning level cost estimates and relative priorities, and begin programming for them for capital improvement. Just a little bit of background, the City Council approved the development of the Parks Capital Plan in late 2017. In early...in March 2018, we held three different public input and design workshops, which were March 10th, March 17th, and March 24th. That was in 2018. Following those...and that...those were all held here at City Hall, and they were really just broad kind of brainstorming sessions where people were allowed to saw what we already had in all of our parks, and then we had some examples of different amenities that they could be interested in and had kind of a really...a really casual conversation about what they would like. And then following that, anybody who was in...was not able to come to one of the workshops, we did have an online survey. It was open throughout April of 2018. Those results were combined and...or compiled and made available on our city website. And then that's how we got the basic concept plan and improvements. We prioritized them with cost estimates, so that was the first round of upgrades. Additionally, we had done...this last summer in 2019, we conducted more public input sessions for Civic Center Park, which is right behind City Hall. This was to go along a...with a grant application that required more...more input sessions. So we had one...we had one session here on May 18th at City Hall. June 26th, we had out at site. July 19th, here at the Kids' Day Festival in La Plaza Park. We had one at one of our summer movies in the park in July as well. And then multiple Thursday night farmers market. We had information available where people could walk by and see what we had planned and give us feedback as well. And then with all of those, all of the feedback collected there, we were...we added those recommendations from the community to the concept level plans and cost estimates. The...as the City Manager mentioned, that the Planning Commission did find our...the Parks Capital Plan consistent with the general plan. And two of the relevant goals are that, one is to preserve and protect the natural and scenic resources of Catati and to provide a high-quality park and recreation network that serves all segments of Catati's population. This...I realize this is a small, hard to read, but you should be able to see it online or in your packet if you have it, the timeline. This is just the general process that we've been following. The first was that we...we had the scope set for the whole plan. And then our Firma, who is part of the...the staff that are working...were at Firma are now at Integra. They went and did inventory and analyzed all of the current parks and the...all of the amenities that we have there and the stages that they're in, so what...how warm they are, and kind of took a...took an inventory. Then we had our community workshop after that to get all of the...get pup...gather public input. And then we took that as the...to start with our base concept and recommendations, which included preliminary cost estimates. Then following multiple edits of that, we went to Planning Commission to find it, informed with the general plan. Here we are again for public comment one more time and City Council review. And then after the comments from tonight, we'll take it back and come back with the final Parks Capital Plan. And then just a little background on the budget process is that we'll take the final plan and prioritize it, prioritize the capital improvement plans that we...so there's two paths, kind of. One is new projects and one is ongoing maintenance. So the one below shows that prioritizing maintenance projects, which are of existing locations and how...and then identify funding for those, that would be something that we have been doing and will continue to do. The other one is to prioritize capital improvement projects, which are for new...new buildings or new amenities. And we would identify funding for that as well and for each of those projects, and then gather public input and then put them into our...round them up into our annual budget every year. So they'll be on the same budget cycle as all of our capital improvement projects. And this will just be the tool that we use to kind of prioritize that and have base budgeting for it. Along with that, the design process will be that we'll scope...we'll do scoping of and review proposal...proposals for each project, so we'll identify which site or which project we're going to do each year. And then we'll get the scope of that project, recommendation from the consult...from whichever consultant we choose. Each site will go to public input again before we make any major changes with the design plan and then specs, estimates. Then we'll go out to bid, like any project that we...any large project that we have, we'll have final...final plan. We'll prepare for big construction. We'll award...we'll award the...to whichever company has the bid that we find the most appropriate, and then we'll implement construction. So it's still a long process before we have any of these projects complete. This is just the baseline to get...to prioritize the projects that we know. And then other considerations that we are aware of are, obviously, we know the first question is going to be, where's the funding going to come from for any of these larger projects? There's some...some funding sources listed here that we are aware of and that we're actively working on now. The first is Proposition 68 per capita grant, which is...is every agency in the state is able to get a little piece of money that was passed in this bond that was in May of 2018. We are slated to get roughly $200,000 for that, which is a given. We've already put it in our budget. We know that's happening. Measure M was the county grant that was...that was passed also this last year, and that's a 10-year grant. It's also per capita, so we'll get a certain number of dollars that we actually should start receiving soon that we can count on for the next 10 years. It was a sales tax measure. We are applying for some of the Prop 68 competitive grants, which one of those was for the Civic Center Park, which we probably heard about. And there's...there's other rounds of that coming too. So if we...we don't get it the first time, we can keep trying. And then there will be other grants in that, in Prop 68. And there's also many local grants and playground matching grants, and there's a whole bunch of them out there that we'll be...that we're looking at all the time. Sponsors, we have had some...some interest by businesses that are interested in helping to sponsor some of our parks, playgrounds, other areas. And then the last case would be annual budget is CIP 20. Public input, I know another question that came up during the Planning Commission was making sure that the public feels like they have a say in what they're going to get in each project or each site prior to us making or constructing. So what's in here are just...it's just important to note that these are just concept plans and they're based on public input, but they can very well still change and will change to be more detailed when we go to each site. So as soon as this is finalized, then we will start planning which project we'll go on to next. And there will be public hearings or public workshops where the community has an opportunity to put what they'd like to see in or not see in their parks at that time. And then I just want to address it. I know that we're still lacking a West Side Park space. This specific plan only addresses the current parks that we have in Catati. And I know that we still are...we're...we're still looking for park development on the West Side if opportunities are presented. So this specific document will not address that, but we are aware of it and still open to the idea. We just...that's not going to be included in this. And then the recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the City of Catati Parks Capital Plan. And with that, I, Rick, and Damian, will take your questions.
Okay, great. Thank you for the presentation. And as you stated, we're not approving budgets or money or actual plans. This is really, just like you were saying, the concept level, correct? Okay, thank you. So I'll bring it back to council, see if there's any questions for staff. Yes, Councilmember Harvey?
So I know we submitted for the Prop 68 Competitive. Any ideas as to when we might hear back on that?
The latest I heard was January.
And I really appreciate the thoughtful input. There was a lot of really thoughtful input that people put into this, which really shows and highlights how important parks are to this community. My question is, is the intention ultimately to have this CIP be like the other ones where we kind of keep updating it and prioritize and, you know, just have it be regular stream of business for the parks, much like we do for the roads and other things?
Yes. So the CIP is sort of the place where all the different reds come together. We have a water project, you have sewer projects, you have building projects, street projects, park projects. And they all...they all have different sort of planning vehicles as to what...sort of what the long-term goals are. And then they all come together, they all thread together in the CIP where on a, you know, five-year horizon, what is, you know, which...out of...out of all of these documents, which ones are the highest priorities and where is the funding availability? And then that would come to Planning Commission for conformity and then to council prior to budget. So the plan for this is this will feed into the next update for a comprehensive CIP. That'll come back to council probably early in the year before budget cycles start for next year.
And lastly, is the intent to do this park by park? Or are we going to pick and choose pieces within par...I mean, how...how meaty gritty are we going to get as far as building this out and going through the process on the pieces?
So I think that would really...that would really depend on available funding and staff, you know, depending on what kind of projects it is. For instance, the Prop 68 Competitive Grant is solely...can only apply for one site, so that would be park by park. The same with the per capita funding, it can only be used at one site. So you try to do as much as you can at that one site. But if you have an allotted amount of funding available and you can put playgrounds in three parks in that, then that could...that could be the priority at the time. But unfortunately, the answer is we don't know until we know what's available.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. In looking at this and potential funding mechanisms, where did the sponsorships come in?
There have been a few...well, historically, groups like The Rotary have helped with installation of park playgrounds and seen other nonprofits and private businesses that have mentioned that they would be interested in doing something like that again. Actually talked to some people at Cal Ripken Baseball, who's theater field, who would be...who were very willing to help with some manpower there, so not necessarily dollar amounts, but depending on manpower. But there's been a couple businesses that have also asked about helping...actually, Catati Park is the one that is...has come up more recently, that there's a need for a new playground there and wanting to help do what it takes to get it replaced. And I've been here, I've reached out.
Okay. I would just caution that I would hate to see like Pocket Park be Pete's Pocket Park.
Yeah, I know. You don't want a Bank of America Park in the middle of Staples Center?
They're not Chase Bank.
Stadium.
Right. So, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
All right. Any questions? Councilmember Lemon?
I'm almost...I'm almost lost picturing the branding opportunities right next to your house, Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, I want to congratulate staff on a very thoughtful approach to this and a really good starting point for something that's obviously going to be a long-term project. I agree with the comments on funding. I'm glad sponsorship will likely be a small part, because I didn't want to see a big pizza loco on the slides either. But...and I like pizza. Having said that, one thing that strikes me is right now we're investing significantly in roads. We have a clip of $1 to $2 million a year averaging on and off last few years, and we plan that for some years to come. At the point that we are caught off...caught up to some degree and roads are less expensive to maintain, there's a savings we'll earn from that. And that's a savings that potentially could be reinvested in something like this too. So with it...but I have two questions, Mr. Staff. Let's see. Bear with. First one is on packet page 416. Mr. Obed, this might be for you, because you might remember what I'm going to bring up. I'm looking at Helen Putnam Park. And if I'm looking at Helen Putnam Park from Myrtle Avenue, towards the right, running along the houses there, going back towards Laguna, there's a nice new pathway and vision. And I want to say this is great and a lot of additions are really great. This is such a wonderful start. But I'm remembering, and I think Mr. Hancock might remember as well, the Laguna de Santa Rosa scoping project that Mr. Obed in particular worked so hard on at the time. And one of the things we had in there is something that took care of the public recreation, groundwater recharge, community pathways, was having a walkway but also having a swale there. Basically, this is a low area. It's essentially a little culvert that feeds water from all over in the area into that creek. And would it be the perfect place for recharge to have something more attractive than just a culvert? Perhaps some native plants, stones, things like that. So I wondered if any aspects of that plan could be folded forward into this conceptually? Because it strikes me, it's the type of thing with that aspect, because there is some small recharge benefit, it might lead to other places, you might get some small additional grant funding for it.
Yeah, so I think... Um, yeah, so, I think, um, I think we certainly can put the, um, put that intent in there.
Because if we're going to have a walkway there for citizens too, it should be aesthetically pleasant, putting on my aesthetic hat, uh, that would be a good thing too, so it works on a lot of issues. Obviously, it's an additional cost, but since we're looking, what's the best bang for a buck long-term, assuming we can find ways to pay for this that are reasonable and available, that would be a good addition, so I just wanted to put that out. So, and, you know, all things, when we talk parks, all things always come back to Pocket Park, it never stops. Uh, I won't talk about the branding opportunities, although I think they're legion, but I will note that, at the community workshop, I noticed in here, it was, there was one quote, somebody said, "Provide something attractive to look at." And I, and I get the sense, I think, it was a very noble intent with this small neighborhood park, but I'm not sure that the end result turned out ultimately to be a forest and there's not a lot of food. And, and looking at that, I see that we intend to add paths to go from the main, existing path will be improved, there'll be smaller paths to go through the plantings, which is a nice idea, I've heard people comment before when I walk by with them, how could we, shouldn't there be a path to go to these various trees? But just paths and lights, if you have a landscape that is felt to be unsuccessful perhaps by the people that live in the community, I don't know if that ultimately really improves it. Uh, I just want to say, if we're looking long-term what this really needs, I would suggest some sort of replanting, partially at least, and that could be a replanting that went back to the concept of production of food with all sorts of fruit trees, of course, that's perhaps more labor to maintain, uh, or it could be perhaps going back to a more typical park. And I, I have no dog in the hunt, either way, I would, I can see the value of both, but I think one of those outcomes would be better than what we have now, because I just haven't heard a lot of satisfaction with the long-term result of this. And as much as there's some good additions here, they won't solve the basic problems, so I just wanted to kind of put that up there for staff. I, I don't know if you can really answer that now, but if at least we could put that into the hopper of consideration, I think something a little further needs to be done for this small park.
Yeah, I think, um, I think a lot of the feedback we got, um, we've gotten from neighbors is seating and then sta- like, safety lighting that would go along with that, because whenever you put a bench somewhere, you want to make sure someone doesn't hang out there at night in the dark.
I remember vaguely being a neighbor.
Neighbors don't like that so much. So, um, yeah, but the seating and the lighting, I think, were something that we heard a lot, as well as sort of the, the landscape condition, and I think that certainly can be part of the discussion when we get to that park for improvements. So, what does that, what's that landscape look like?
The original comments were on, let's see, page 402. And, yeah, most of the others were more pragmatic benches, shade trees or shade structure, signage, pavements, uh, but that one thing did jump out at me as something I've heard over and over, and, and I'll admit, as somebody walks by there with some degree of regularity, seems a, a not unreasonable concern, I think there's some validity to this. Thank you for that. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
So, if there's no further questions for staff, I'll open it up to public comments. Would anybody like to make comment on the approval of the Parks Capital Plan? Yes, please come up. Wait till you get to the mic so that it's recorded. That's okay, it's being video recorded.
Coming, um, coming from Monterey County, one of the playgrounds that was put into the area was really kind of cool, and it was an all-inclusive disabled, um, playground, and there was a lot of funding and grants that came because it was a disabled park and place structure, so I don't know if any thought has been put into that. And then, in addition, um, I know anytime you're doing like a, a five or 10-year master plan, you have to look at accessibility changes, and I'm not sure if that's been looked at when we're upgrading the parks, um, even just for maintenance and what's required by the state and the counties, I just want to make sure that everybody's looking at the accessibility requirements when putting together the master plans. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other public comments? Yes, Mr. Beach?
Counsel, regarding, uh, grants and other types of funny money, um, I want to remind the council, remind Jennifer too, that, uh, the state of California is broke. Federal government is broke, just went through a series of wildfires, and the governor has reminded us how many billions of dollars it's gonna take to try to clean up this mess. The fact is, I don't think we're gonna see any grant money from the Trump administration, any stimulus money anytime soon, for parks in Rec. So, let's, let's get a little real about this. City of Katati hasn't planned any parks, public parks, on the west side of Katati for 50 years, and I don't see that that's gonna change anytime soon. In fact, we don't even have a mailbox, a pu- a post office box on the west side of town. To mail a letter, you gotta come over to the east side. We have dangerous intersections, council knows all about them. We have paved roads and streets that are turning to dirt on the west side. Regarding the workshops, where are all these workshops? Park workshops? Where's all this public input? I was in this room, where the one and only workshop for the Fletty Fake Farm Park across the street. And Mayor Deloso had promised there's gonna be more workshops before anything is done. There's been no more workshops, all been done in staff. Put a beautiful fence around the park, I can't remember how many thousands of dollars that fence cost, a fence so fancy, no farmer would ever build such a fence. And, um, we recently had a workshop regarding the Civic Center Park, we had one workshop. So, you have your work cut out for you regarding parks, considering our roads are going to hell, um, there's a, a, a lack of tourism in town, we've got hotels that can't figure out whether they're coming to Katati or not, um, the downtown specific plan is basically dead on arrival, we're almost 11 years into the downtown specific plan, which is supposed to be a 30 plan, a 30-year plan to renovate this whole downtown area, and we haven't made it but a dent in it, but for the 1.1 million dollars we got from the Obama administration on the backs of our children and grandchildren, thank you very much, plus interest. Think about that. So, we got a long way to go.
All right, thank you for that. Anybody else wanting to make public comments? Okay, seeing none, I will close for the comments, and I'll bring it back to council.
Uh, Madam Mayor, just a quick comment, there was a question, where were all the meetings? Actually, the very first page in this report, packet page 353, next to last paragraph lists each and every one, and a quick count, at least leaning in this angle looking, I think there's roughly eight to 10, depending how many times you did this at the farmer's market, which for us is a pretty substantial number, so, they're right there, and there's a pretty decent number. And last I heard, uh, I don't know how the state's doing with great accuracy like I do our budget, but I know that Jerry Brown saved a whole lot of money and it hasn't been spent yet, so, well, it says USA and it's green, so you can call it what you want, but it's spent in this country, my friend. So, with that, I think we're not in a bad place.
Okay. Any further comments?
No, I would make a resolution.
Go for it.
I would move to the city council, the city of Katati, adopt a resolution approving that Parks Capital Plan.
I'd be happy to second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, please show that's a four zero vote in favor. And we're moving on to City Manager's Report, item 13. Mr. Obid, take it away.
Thank you, I'm doodling on Ashley's page, so, um, I'll try to be fairly brief here. Um, so, you may have heard that PG shut the power off.
I heard that rumor, it was weird.
Yeah, I don't mean to reopen a wound, I apologize. Um, but one thing I did want to report back to everyone on, since I know that there was some interest in this, is, uh, during the shut-off, uh, the city was running a, a charging station in the Katati Room from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and, um, we had residents there each day, and, um, I think all, basically all the council members spent time there, um, volunteering, and, um, we had a lot of residents come down to charge the batteries on their medical, medical equipment, CPAP machines, nebulizers, that sort of thing, as well as personal electronics and, um, and free, you know, Wi-Fi. And we also had donated lunch, um, I'm just telling you, I guess what you already know, but, but, uh, one of the things that kind of struck me about the whole thing that I thought was interesting is that the most antisocial behavior that you can think of, which is playing on your device, turned into, in a group setting, a very social atmosphere, which was counterintuitive to me. I thought that was a nice outcome. Um, and the thing I wanted to report back was that the, uh, the count that we had of visitors was about 1,100 people over those, um, four days that we had it open. So, it was well-attended, as you know. Um, also, we, um, recently had the housing workshop, as you also know, but, um, there's a community housing survey posted on the city website under headlines, so if you have an opinion about housing and couldn't make it to the workshop, or even if you did make it to the workshop, um, go on the city website under headlines and, um, it's an opportunity to get your voice heard early in the process as we start talking about housing issues in the city. Just a quick note on Kessing Ranch, um, which is right there at the corner of Alprizo and Oribin Highway, that new development that's under construction there. You should be seeing, um, the start of model homes in the not-too-distant future, so the next couple months, we're probably gonna start seeing some vertical structures going up. And then, on the recreation front, on October 31st, we celebrated our 30th Annual City Halloween Event at City Hall, I need to pronounce that right, so she's right next to me. Um, the event was bigger and better than ever, with the help of Ran- the Ranch of Katati, um, high hospitality students, we had live snakes from Safari Encounters, um, pumpkin bowling at the Veronda Fletty Ranch, and a generous candy donation from Safeway, maybe you saw that on Facebook, it was a gigantic pile of candy that we got from them. And, um, it, you know, it's, I guess, one of the silver linings with the power, power shut-off is that they, um, the Safeways couldn't run their point-of-sale systems, they couldn't sell anything, and it was almost Halloween, so they decided to donate a bunch of their candy to us, which was very nice of them. And, um, through the event, we served over, almost 1,500 guests, um, which is close to 1,000 more than we did last year. So, I think the combination of, um, schools being, um, canceled during the week and, um, just everyone wanting to finally get out of their house and do something fun, really led to a huge turnout for that event. And, um, we expect this event to continue to be a hit, and we look forward to next year. Um, we're also offering, offering Camp Katati Thanksgiving Break Camp during the week of Thanksgiving, when students have a week off of school. So, we're open from 7:30 in the morning until 6:00 at night, Monday through Wednesday, and, um, it's a place, it's a safe place and fun environment for kids while they're off of school and their parents are working. The days will be filled with games, crafts, and outside time if the weather permits. We're also in the process of planning the annual tree lighting event and are accepting vendor applications and volunteers now. So, the event is gonna be on Friday, December 6th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., and you can expect an evening full of fun as usual. Santa, I hear, will be there, so, um, I encourage you all to come, if you don't have that on your calendar yet. And then, um, the, uh, the next weekend, weekend, we'll have Breakfast with Santa here in the Katati Room on Sunday, December 14th, 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 p-, uh, 10:30 a.m. Oh, Saturday, sorry, I missed right there. Saturday, December 14th, 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. in the Katati Room, registration's open now, so, um, it's, spaces are already filling up quickly, so if you have any interest in being, or going to that event, we encourage you to register now to save your spot. If you have any questions about city programs or events, please contact Ashley, 665-4222, or awilson@katatacity.org, or you can obviously always go to our webpage, or the city's Facebook or Instagram, which is for more information. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for City Manager?
No, I just had a comment, first, of course.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Moore.
Regarding the charging stations during the power outage, um, more people came up to us and indicated that it was really a virtual lifeline for them, uh, there was a sense of community, there was a sense where they knew that they could go and they could connect with people that they, they hadn't connected with, who, um, maybe needed to hear that they were doing okay and things were gonna be fine, so, uh, in addition to the unintended consequences of the socialization, um, it really was a comfort for many of those people, and, uh, I thought it was a terrific volunteer, volunteer effort by so many, including staff and councilmembers and, and community volunteers. Comment on that.
Thank you. And Councilmember Lemon?
Perfect segue, I would have to agree on that, you had to have been there and worked there, but the incredibly strong sense of community that came out of that, and the wonderful thing, seeing everybody sitting there with their phones, but usually what they were doing was talking to each other, because they all wanted to tell their story of what they were going through, and it was a little different for everybody, whether it was a young kid coming in to watch The Incredibles and probably one of the few functioning DVD players and television sets in the town, well, he got his breathing treatment, or people charging their phones, are there electric wheelchairs, the whole range, which leads to what I wanted to comment about, I would like to give a tip of the hat to everybody here, all the staff responsible for this, so the public understands, this small group of people, as usual, ran the city, because its day-to-day operations did not stop during this. They also ran and manned for the whole time an emergency operations center in the police community room, something that not many people are aware of, but something we have to do to be ready in case this had got worse, we were prepared. They also provided, as we know, thanks to foresight of Mr. Obid and the hard work of everybody here, electricity, uh, which we now know, after just a few days, not even a full calendar week of no power, how incredibly dependent our lives are on this. So, I think that was an incredibly valuable thing, and I'm not gonna name names, but I did work with one employee who had been evacuated from the northern part of this county in the middle of the night that morning, this was a Sunday, had to come in to work the next day and moved their family down to Marin somewhere, to all shelter with friends, family. It was back up that evening for the 4:00 to 8:00 shift to work, uh, because it was just something we needed to do, and the only way to do it is a few extra staff people and a few councilmembers put some time into it, so, and with that, you still all managed to hustle and get City Halloween on, on too. So, I think that speaks to the quality of people you have working here, and I just wanted you all to be aware of it, very appreciative, and I hope we don't have to go through that particular drill again, but nevertheless, nicely done to all of you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, seeing no more comments from, uh, council, I'll open it up to public comments. Make public comment.
I'm a partner with Katati Large Animal Hospital, and we're getting things tonight, but I had a letter saying, um, this was a meeting about, um, a facility that's going in next to our property, which is 8079 Reverend St. Highway, and I think it's, uh, like a facility, a pretty large facility, that's gonna go in there for aged, uh, people, and I just, I just wanted to make a few comments about that. Our practice has been there since 1956, it started by, uh, Dr. Bill Cordham and Dr. Groverman, um, I think we're one of the oldest, um, members of the, of the city, um, and, and we're a little bit concerned about that, because this is, and, uh, pretty much an ag community, and I think we're kind of forgetting about the ag community, and, uh, as an example, during the fires, our facility was full of, uh, rescue animals and several people actually were living there in trailers. In fact, uh, one of our clients was sleeping on our laboratory floor, um, I won't tell you what she was sleeping on, because, uh, we use that for, uh, some, some things, I, I wouldn't tell her that we were using, but, um, so, a long-term, um, employee and facility here, um, if we had to move, I don't know where we could get those kind of facilities. Our practice is actually called Veterinary Associates, so it was the first practice in California that was actually incorporated, so it's one of the oldest practices in the state.
And if I could, just for a moment, um, to clarify, tonight, what all we were doing is changing the zoning, so there's still plenty of time to come back and comment as well on the facility and any changes.
Well, great, so I didn't, I didn't know that, I missed the agenda, so.
No, no, that's okay, I just wanted to let you know.
If you don't need to hear anymore, I am concerned, right?
No, no, that's, you're, and you're welcome to, to continue speaking, I just wanted to let you know that you'll have other opportunities as well, so don't feel like this is it.
Okay, I, I was a little late, I apologize for that.
No, no, that's okay.
I didn't know if that was on the agenda already, so, um, if there's any questions, um... If there's any questions, we are concerned as a practice and as a long-time...